Okay, I'll back you up. There's the dynamic here.
Good evening, I call this meeting to order of the Bellingham City Council for Monday, March 10th, 2014. Couple of announcements and upcoming meetings on Saturday, March 15th at 8:30, that's early. Woodstock Farms, the city council will hold our annual retreat on Monday, March 24th at 12:30 PM in city council chambers, there will be a transportation benefit district meeting. On Wednesday, March 26th at 6:30 PM in these chambers, there will be an annual Lake Waccom Joint Councils and Commission meeting. On Monday, April 7th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers, there will be a public hearing to consider a proposed text amendment to Bellingham Municipal Code 20.00.100 for the lettered streets table of zoning regulations. The Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Terry Bornerman.
Here.
Gene Knutson.
Here.
Kathy Lehman.
Here.
Michael Illaquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Okay, there are no minutes for us to approve this evening, so we're going to go right into our 15-minute public comment period. We have a couple folks signed up. Joseph Levy, David Scherer, Rick Keen, followed by Marion Bedell. If you could come line up at the door here and go in order, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Come on in. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hold the mic.
Yeah, yeah. Is that better? Hi, my name is Joseph Levy. I'm from the Associated Students, I'm their local liaison, and I'm going to talk tonight about the rental registration that the mayor proposed and the AS official response to that. First off, we're really excited about it. We want to see more increased registrations, so that was great. But we did notice a few key points that we thought were slightly issues, so we have some solutions we proposed. I'm going to read those off. Number one, we request a timeline on the specifics of the implementation. It'd be beneficial to understand why this is such a long process. And if there's no benefit to the length, we would prefer to have the full implementation period shortened. If landlords are going to want to register their rentals, there needs to be positive incentives for being on the registration. It seems that the only positive motivation for them is the opportunity to be on this published list, which doesn't seem to be a powerful enough incentive for major rental companies that already publicize their housing. Additionally, there's an excess demand of rental housing in Bellingham, so it's very likely that those properties will be rented anyway. Number three, it's unrealistic to assume that a mere code violation will be sufficient in persuading landlords to register their properties. One must consider the fact that many individuals already know who the infamously non-compliant landlords are and yet still rent from them. Other negative repercussions should be explored, such as a fine that could create or fund other parts of the program. Number four, with inspections at 0.5%, it would take 200 years for every registered rental in Bellingham to be inspected under this program. This does not create a reasonable expectation for landlords to believe that they're at risk of having an inspection. We like the possibility of a higher inspection rate being explored, and furthermore, we recommend that the greater inspection rates be in the areas with more rentals such as York, Seashore, and Happy Valley. Number five, it'd be preferable to have the city's plan for a public outreach and education program elaborated, and to include the Associated Students and Western Washington University in this discussion, so we can help define that. We hope that Western will be only one part of the education program, because it's imperative that a substantial amount of education outreach be directed toward non-students as well, especially those at risk of dangerous living conditions. And finally, number six, being that a large portion of renters in Bellingham are students, it does not make sense to have inspections occur in January, which is the middle of a rental agreement for many students. If possible, we'd like to see the inspections occur in the summer, like July, when all the leases are ending. So to conclude, we hope that in your discussions about city council agenda bill 20285, you'll keep these points in mind. The Associated Students of Western Washington University looks forward to partnering with you all to improve living conditions for citizens in Bellingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. David Scherer.
Yes, thank you. I'm here to discuss the invasive species program for Lake Waccom and Lake Samish, and I represent kayakers and canoeers of this area. I've been an active canoeer and kayaker in Waccom County in Bellingham for over 30 years, and I'm always on the, I spend anywhere from two to three days a week on the water training. And it's not that I disagree, or the majority of us paddlers in our paddling community disagree with the approach, as far as trying to get rid of zebra mussels or other invasive species in our freshwaterways, but we question the system, and as we are told, it's going to include a $10 fee to get a tag that we have to put on our boat and display as we go through an inspection line every time we want to launch at Lake Waccom or Lake Samish. And I think that could definitely hold up the process of getting people on the water. And we have races every Wednesday night, where we have anywhere from 30 to 40 boats participating in these events, and we also have two major events that happen on Lake Waccom, where we have 100 boats to 150 boats from out of the area that participate in these events. We also have fellow paddlers from the Nooksack and the Lummi Nations that bring in boats from out of the area. We also share the water with rowing clubs, both Bellingham Rowing Clubs and Western Washington University's rowing, both on Lake Waccom and Lake Samish. So my concern is that even though there might be a fee incurred program that's supposed to kind of reduce the potential for invasive species, I think a better approach would be a stewardship, an environmental stewardship approach, where it's based on education. I can easily see how we could produce brochures that we could then distribute and have stationed in different areas where we could, where we have boats launching, similar to a brochure you might find in front of a house for sale in a little box. And also a website where people can go to and learn how to be environmental stewards. There are very good examples of that in California, where California has what's known as the Lake Tahoe Stewardship Program, where it's a free program, and all they ask paddlers to do is to go online, learn about how you can prevent being a host for invasive species, which is actually very simple, not nearly as complicated or as challenging for people that have a motor on a boat. And then there are other examples as well, where I think it would be an effective approach to rely on education rather than fines or new taxes. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Rick Keen, or Keen?
Keeny, thanks. I came here tonight because I realized that there's a problem that every one of us here and all the people that use the city streets here in Bellingham have. I've got three topics, I'm going to just basically pass this around and give you the last copy when I get through. There's three things that I have a problem with, and I'm not the only one, but I know it's difficult for the police to monitor, so I'm looking to you folks to see about getting some teeth to this. The reason I'm bringing it forward is that I believe there's going to probably be some serious accidents. If they haven't happened already, they will happen, because of jaywalking that's going on all over this city. Doesn't matter whether it's Alabama, Cornwall, State Street, you take the street, you can see jaywalkers, and it doesn't matter about the age, doesn't matter whether you're a teenager, or 65, or 85, or 45, or whatever, male or female, everyone, and probably some of us here in this group as well. That's a problem, because it really creates a problem, and what brought it to my head was here just recently going downtown Bellingham here. I was on Magnolia, driving, and right through a green light, a pedestrian walks right out in front of me. Now, I realize the police have a little bit of a problem, and the city has a little bit of a problem with some of the homeless issues, but if a motorist hits somebody, they're automatically at fault. Doesn't matter whether somebody came out from the parking stall, they're going to get the job. That's not fair. So I don't think it's reasonable. So I'd like to see the city put some kind of teeth to people who jaywalk and let them find them, or do something of that nature. The next thing I have is kind of similar, but always bicycle traffic. While I agree with a lot of the bike routes that are around the city, I think it's nice to have that, a lot of the bicyclists don't obey the rules, and until some of the police are able to give some teeth to ticketing those folks as well, because you'll get them coming out of the bicycle lanes, making turns without signaling, don't give the drivers a fair chance of being able to turn, or even coming right up next to you, riding on the white line, and possibly brushing your vehicle. I've had that happen to me. That is a concern, because while it's nice to have bicycle lanes, I think that's nice, but if you don't have some monitoring of it for those people being responsible, I don't see how that's going to help make traffic any safer at all. And I really think you guys need to look at putting some teeth into some, give the police some, or if you will, our citizens, some kind of recourse, so that the traffic person, whether it's an automobile or motorcycle, doesn't have to take the full blunt of a problem if it truly wasn't their problem. But their insurance company's going to get it, or the person's going to get it, no matter what, because you know and I know, if a person's walking and he gets hit by a car, they're going to get, who's going to get it? It's going to be the person with the car, no matter what happens, whether the person was right or wrong. Then the last thing I have to say is about red light and stop sign running. It's prevalent throughout this whole city, and I've almost gotten T-boned more than once, even with the delayed signals. I have a black car, and in daylight, not in night, I almost got T-boned three times, right down off of Commercial and Chestnut. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Marion, if there's anyone else who would like to speak this evening, please do come down now and...
My name's Marion Bedill, Bellingham. I come here tonight happy. If you didn't see the other meeting in September, when I was mad. Water, my standard old project concern. I moved to Bellingham in 91, and in 1997, I started working on Lake Waccom pollution issues. How many years has that been, 15, that I've been pushing the issue, speaking out, trying to make some changes, and I'm appreciative that both the city and the county have made some notable advances in the work for protecting our drinking water source, Lake Waccom watershed and reservoir. I see on your agenda tonight, you have agenda bill 20331 for the filtration plant. Building a filtration plant for the water that comes out of the lake, that costs you money, costs the people money. I've been predicting for 12 years that the lake was going to get so bad that you'd have to improve the treatment plant, and cost taxpayer money to do it. It's happening. My prediction was right, and the only reason it's happening is because the lake water quality, the phosphorus that gets in it from the ground, keeps getting worse instead of getting better. My point is duh obvious, there needs to be more work by the government agencies and by the citizens to improve and reduce the amount of phosphorus that goes from the land into the water. Pure and simple. There's lots of ways to do it. Some of them work well, some of them cost a lot of money and don't work very well. So keep pushing on that. I've got a minute left. How many of you council members, and you're the old timer, I think, here, can tell us about the 21 goals that were established in 1992 for the protection of the Lake Waccom watershed? Please raise your hand if you know about those 21 goals that were set. Ah, okay, a good half, that'll almost get it elected. And I appreciate your responses, because you're not required to respond to questions from the audience. Go to my website, lakewacom.org, right on the front page, there's a link to the 21 goals, and I invite you, the citizens, and I invite you, the council members, go open that page and look at the items that were agreed by the city and the county, and at the time, Water District 10, now it's the Lake Waccom Water and Sewer. Look at those 21 goals and tell yourself how well you have been doing in satisfying those goals. I declare it's pretty poorly, and I further request that you do more in that regard to make it even better, because otherwise, the next prediction is, we're going to get hit by the state and the feds. And do you want the state and the federal government down here slapping your wrist or something in order to make our Lake Waccom water clean? Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Marion. This is Marion happy. Thank you. Anyone else care to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public comment period and move into our presentations for the evening. We have three items this evening. I'm actually going to rearrange the schedule a tiny bit here and switch number one and three. So the parliamentary procedure presentation will go first, and the Community Development Advisory Board presentation will go last. And while I'm introducing this, if you folks want to come down...
Point of order, can you do that?
Yeah. So in February, four council members attended a parliamentary procedure training with the Association of Washington Cities, and I think I can speak for all of us when I say it was very valuable. And then it was brought to my attention that we have our very own Parley Pro team in Waccom County from Linden High School, and so we've invited them here this evening to give us a short presentation, and I'm going to read a little description here. The FFA parliamentary procedure is one of many career development events that students who belong to FFA chapters can compete in at district, state, and national levels. Parliamentary procedure career development events encourage students to learn to effectively participate in a business meeting and to assist in the development of their leadership skills. A Parley Pro team consists of six members of the same chapter. The Linden High School FFA Parley Pro team has, for many years, consistently ranked highly at the local, state, and national level. The Linden High School FFA chapter advisor is Lad Shumway, and I will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Yes, I'm Lad Shumway, and this is our fine, some of Linden's finest FFA members here, so I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hello, this is, okay, I'm Julianne McKay.
I'm Michaela Marhevka.
I'm Juan Gavett.
I'm Abigail Adams.
I'm Tyler Stitt.
I'm Ian Watzke.
Okay, so I'll call time, and you guys can sit down and start looking at your motion. Okay, so go ahead. Okay, so they're going to look at what they're going to demonstrate here for a minute, and I'll briefly explain what's going to happen. Okay, so parliamentary procedure, lots of us know about Robert's Rules of Order, all right? And these fine people here have been working on this now for two and three years, and we compete in the state and national level, and they've spent a lot of hours studying this, and they can demonstrate all the motions on this list, and they know more about it than I do, because they're deep into it now, and like, there's 1,600 possible test questions, and they're probably through about 500 of them before our first competition. And what you're going to see here today is, is they know what motion they have to demonstrate, but they don't know what the other people are going to be doing, and they don't really know the topic of the day until they just turned the paper over a minute ago. So they're going to each debate four times and demonstrate two motions. And with that, Julianne, are you ready? It might be kind of awkward for us to pass the microphone around, but we'll try our best, and they have loud voices, they'll be able to hear us. Okay, so Julianne, go ahead and go.
Is there any further business to come before the chapter at this time?
Madam Chairman.
Michaela.
I move that our chapter sponsor an FFA ice skating party after our next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
It is a move and seconded that our chapter sponsor an FFA ice skating party after our next regular chapter meeting. Is there any debate?
I'm answering the question.
Consideration of the question has been objected to. Shall the question be considered? All those in favor of considering the question, please rise. Thank you, be seated. Those opposed, rise. Thank you, be seated. There are less than two-thirds in the negative, and the objection is not sustained. Is there any debate on the main motion?
I'm answering.
Michaela.
I think this is a fabulous motion. I think that our FFA chapter needs a break, and this means going ice skating and bonding over our fallen comrades on the ice as they clumsily tried to ice skate around. I think this would be a great idea for our chapter, and I really think that we should implement it. So members, vote yes on this motion.
Madam Chairman.
I'm strongly appalled that this assembly wants to consider this motion. Right now, we have too much on our agenda to be discussing this. If we're to do some FFA ice skating party, that's going to put our chapter at great risk, at liability. Not very many of our members know how to skate like I, I would just fall and break my hip, most likely. So I really don't think that we need to be considering this motion. Members, please fail this.
Madam Chairman.
I think this is a fantastic motion. As we all know, the FFA meetings are very formal, and leave little room to discuss informally and grow relationships that are needed in order to succeed. And if we go ice skating, that will give us room to grow great relationships between our members, and it would be a really fun time as well, which is why I urge members to vote yes.
Madam Chairman.
Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Lately, our FFA members have been working very hardly and preparing for things like the state FFA convention, which is coming up very soon. So since our FFA members have been working very persistently and diligently, I think it is only fair to give them a little bit of a break, and I'm very in favor of this ice skating party to give everyone a little break and some fun. So please pass this motion.
Madam Chairman.
Ian.
I'm strongly against this motion. I think that ice skating is too dangerous for our members, and that we could definitely choose a better activity that would bond all of us together, such as rollerblading. So please vote no on this motion.
Madam Chairman.
Tyler.
I move to suspend the special chapter rule that states that members must rise to second a motion.
Second.
It is a move and seconded to suspend the special chapter rule that states members must rise to second a motion. All those in favor of suspending this rule, please rise. Thank you, be seated. Those opposed, rise. Thank you, be seated. There are four for, one against, and we'll suspend the special chapter rule. Members, not have to rise to second.
Madam Chairman.
Michaela.
I move to recess for five minutes.
Second.
It is a move and seconded to recess for five minutes. All those in favor of recessing, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. No. If no's have, we will not recess.
Madam Chairman. One.
I move to postpone this motion indefinitely.
Second. It is a move and seconded to postpone this matter indefinitely. Is there any debate?
Madam Chairman. One.
As I stated earlier, we have too much on our agenda to be discussing this. Right now, we have to get Mr. Shumway's 60th birthday gift planned out, and I really don't think that we have time to be discussing this. We need to get the members ready for their upcoming CDs and get them ready for the FFA banquet. We have too much on our agenda right now to be discussing this, so I flat out think we need to kill it. Pass this postponement.
Madam Chairman.
Michaela.
This is a ridiculous postponement. We do not need to put this off. We can vote on it, and this is no way dangerous to our chapter in which this motion insists that it is. So members, vote no on this postponement.
Madam Chairman.
Abby. This is a terrible postponement. This only brings us great relationship bonds between our members, and it's a great fun time, which is why I urge members to vote no.
Madam Chairman.
isn't my favorable choice, I think that it definitely deserves consideration. So, please vote no on this postponement.
Is there any further debate on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All who's in favor of postponing this matter indefinitely, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. No. The noes have it, will not postpone. Madam Chairman.
I move to amend the main motion by striking out the word "ice skating" and inserting "rollerblading."
Is a moved and seconded to amend the main motion by striking out the word "ice skating" and inserting the word "rollerblading." So that, if adopted, the motion shall read, "I move that our chapter sponsor an FFA roller skating party after our next regular chapter meeting." Is there any debate? Madam Chairman.
Rollerblading would indeed be the better choice because we have a rollerblading rink right there in Linden, so it'll be a lot easier for the members to commute there instead of having to drive all the way to Bellingham. Also, I think that the FFA chapter members are better at rollerblading than they are at ice skating, so it's going to be less hazardous to them. So, vote yes on this amendment.
Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I agree with the maker of this amendment. Not only would it be more accessible for our FFA members to go to this activity if it were to be rollerblading, since there is a rollerblading rink in Linden, it would also be supporting one of our local businesses, and it would be our chapter showing support rate in our community. So, members, please pass this amendment.
Madam Chairman.
I agree with this amendment. I think that roller skating is a lot easier than ice skating, and it would just be a lot easier for our beginners like Abby to learn how to roller skate. So, members, vote yes on this amendment.
Madam Chairman. Abby.
I would also like to show my favor for this motion. I think this is a great amendment because roller skating is a lot more fun than ice skating, and ice skating is more of a winter activity, and roller skating is more of a springtime or summertime activity, which is why I urge members to vote yes.
Madam Chairman.
Roller skating is something that we need to do if only all of our members know first aid. I really don't think that we can be going out there and putting our members in danger. We need to look at the liability insurance, and I think that's something dangerous that we don't want to be pushing into. We have too much on our agenda, as I've stated, and I think by amending this, this is only going to make the motion more dangerous. So, members, please fail this amendment.
Madam Chairman.
I move the previous question.
Second. The previous question has been moved. All who's in favor of moving the previous question, please rise. They can be seated, those opposed, rise. It's five for, zero against, and we'll move the previous question. All who's in favor of amending the main motion by striking out the words "ice skating" and inserting the words "roller skating," so that, if adopted, the motion shall read, "I move that our chapter sponsor an FFA roller skating party after our next regular chapter meeting." Say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. No. The noes have it, and the motion's amended. Is there any debate on the amended main motion? Madam Chairman.
I have just been informed that the water pipes in the barn have been broken. Therefore, due to more urgent business, I move to lay this matter on the table.
It is a moved and seconded to lay this matter on the table. All who's in favor of laying this matter on the table, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. No. The noes have it, will not lay this matter on the table. Is there any further debate on the amended main motion? Madam Chairman.
I must reiterate my favor for this motion. I see this main motion as the potential to be very beneficial to our chapter, and again, give all of our chapter members a great break that everyone deserves. So, members, please pass this motion.
Madam Chairman.
I want to once again say how great this motion is. I think that our FFA chapters are working so hard lately, and to bring everyone together to rollerblade and have fun at the rollerblading rink in Linden would just be so great. So, vote yes on this motion.
Madam Chairman.
I move that when this meeting adjourns, it adjourns to meet at 2:30 PM tomorrow in Niagara.
Is a moved and seconded that when this meeting adjourns, it adjourns to meet at 2:30 PM tomorrow in Niagara. All who's in favor of fixing the time to which it adjourns, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. No. The noes have it, will not fix the time. Is there any further debate on the amended main motion?
Madam Chairman.
I just want to reiterate my distaste for this motion. If we're to go ahead and pass this motion, that's going to be putting our members at risk. And also, as I've stated many times, and I want to make this clear, we have too much on our agenda to be discussing this. We have to get the banquet all set up, and we have to get members ready for their upcoming CDs. We have the sub-district contests on Wednesday, and we just have way too much to be discussing right now. Members, fail this motion.
Madam Chairman.
I would just like to again say that I think this is a wonderful motion. As you know, high school students are under a lot of stress right now with SATs coming up in May and AP tests, too. This would be a great stress reliever for kids, and we would also, it would be a celebration for kids who are moving on to districts and state, which is why I urge members to vote yes.
Madam Chairman.
Again, this is a great motion. A lot of students, as they're preparing for state, get stuck in their books and practicing all day long and not going outside or enjoying any physical activity whatsoever. Skating, on the other hand, is great physical activity, and we really need it right about now. So, members, vote yes on this motion.
Is there any further debate on the amended main motion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All who's in favor of having our chapter sponsor an FFA roller skating party after our next regular chapter meeting, say aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. No. The noes have it, and the motion's adopted. Is there any further business to come before the chapter at this time?
Madam Chairman.
Ian.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It is a moved and seconded to adjourn. All who's in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. No. The noes have it, and this meeting's adjourned.
Okay, so, I think they did quite well. I thought their debates were diverse, and they all achieved two motions in four debates, so I think they did a fine job. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Have any of you ever watched the city council on television? Seriously, I ask that question because Juan did a hell of a job playing Jack White.
Yeah?
Excuse me. I thought that was Terry.
Yes, Michael.
I really did appreciate that. You've got to be a bit of an insider and a geek to appreciate how well-done that was and how you were jumping up and down the order of motions. And I really respect you, Juan, because you've got to be on the side of losing votes a lot if you're fighting for what you believe in. I also think you should know that we actually do not follow Robert's rules strictly, and we're in the business of formalizing exactly why we do not stand up and down like Poppin' Jays, but I appreciate that very much.
All right, anything else? Okay, well, thank you for letting us occupy 10 minutes of your precious time, and with that, we'll be off to Linden.
Thank you all, very, very much.
Okay, bye.
Now, we expect you, Kathy, to be that quick on leading this meeting.
Chop, chop. Wow. Very tough act to follow. That was very, very cool. I have a lot to learn.
Madam Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Denied. Let's move on. Okay, so, we do have two other presentations this evening, and the next one is going to be another probably very cool presentation on downtown alley space options by students from a design studio class at Huxley College with Western Washington University. And I will read a little bit more about this as well. Students in design studio classes at Huxley College with Western Washington University regularly produce a collaborative set of design concepts and apply these to specific urban design problems. Students in the urban transition studio will present a study of 15 Bellingham downtown alley spaces to the council, mayor, and city staff and the general public at this evening's meeting. And I'm going to turn it over now to Nick Saffaratos and his students. Come on down.
Kathy? Kathy?
Yes, Jack. Yeah, stand, please.
Before Nick starts, I just wanted to say a couple of words. Nick has been providing very good educational opportunities to students in his planning classes and has, I think, has provided a tremendous resource for our city that I wish that we would be able to use a little bit more. I think last year's, you know, reimagining State Street presentation was incredible. It was something that I think was very timely. It was, it positioned itself with the efforts that we were talking about associated with the waterfront and where we put our infill in our community. And I thought that the, you know, the scope and the creativity that was provided within that presentation was really good, and I am looking forward to the alley presentation that you have this evening. But I want us to really look at this, both on the council level and with our planning staff and with our administration, that, you know, these students that come from Western, they're going to be our leaders. They're the ones that are coming up with these ideas, this creativity, and I think that we really should, we should pay attention, so.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Jack, very much. Madam Chairwoman, members of the council, Mayor Linville, how are you tonight? This is a great opportunity for our students to be able to present the work from this winter quarter, and I really appreciate the time that you've been available on your busy calendar. This winter quarter's planning studio, we are looking at one of our neglected assets, our beloved alleys, which were just within the downtown area. The 15 blocks that we studied comprise over three acres of underutilized publicly-owned properties, about 6,000 linear feet of wonderfully pedestrian-oriented frontage to properties and private businesses, tremendous business opportunities for accessing those alleys and expanding retail business capacity, the opportunities for expanding social capital and building distinct alley characters within these neglected spaces, and for introducing environmental design and sustainability initiatives within a context of increasing pedestrian connectivity throughout the entire downtown. We're really excited about what we're about to embark on, and that is our update to the downtown plan. We were extremely successful in the work that was completed in the 2002 plan, and from what I've reviewed of the staff's work, the upcoming draft that'll just about ready to enter the public process is very exciting. They've also addressed the importance of alleys. In fact, there are some 24 mentions in the draft plan to alleys or alleyways, including goal 7.5 that addresses the importance of considering the importance of clean and safety conditions in alleys, viewing them as important corridors of connectivity for bike and pedestrian connections, public space amenities, and retail destinations. Also, very important, as we're seeing a transition of our downtown, the increase of residential permanent population downtown, and with that comes a lot of needs. So, we asked our students to take a look at the 15 alleys in the downtown and to examine what opportunities we have for improvement and for economic growth, and they came up with 107 ideas under six categories. Development opportunities, open space, parks, to meet that growing residential population demand, need for increase in opportunities for increased social and human capital, environmental sustainable design improvements in the alleys, improvements to utilities, connectivity, and public safety. Of those 107 ideas, we don't have the time to go through them all, but our students will be presenting 10 of those ideas. A full report will be made available to the city and to the council following this presentation tonight. We still have a week before finals. And this project will also continue into spring quarter, where our students will examine implementation concerns. We really emphasize concept development during this winter, and students will be looking at both in terms of phasing and timing and capital requirements, and especially cooperation with the business sector downtown as the next phase of the project. We organized the project by splitting the class into five different teams, and each team will be responsible for three alleys. So, in total, we examined 15 alleys between Laurel Street to the south and Champion Street to the north, and just west of Bay Street and State Street on the west and east perimeter. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our students.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matthew Gaultier. This is my colleague, Chris Smith, and we worked with Lauren Anderson and Leah Barta, and we are the green alleys in the plan, alleys one, two, and three in the Old Town site area. So, to put it in context, this is the historic center of downtown, the original site of the industries that made Bellingham what it is today, and it's also the future site of several incoming projects, including the Army Street redevelopment and the waterfront plan. So, it's a very unique site, and we have many opportunities that we assessed. It's the existing location of several of downtown's major businesses, including the Pickford Cinema, the Wild Buffalo Bar, Rocket Donuts, and the Old Town Cafe. Under our six goals, we analyzed 18 strategies meant to improve these sites, and so several of the opportunities include, but are not limited to, an outdoor movie theater on the wall of the Pickford, infill opportunities in new retail sites, as well as signage and place-making opportunities for these alleys, and enhancing landmark and bay views all throughout. But tonight, we'd like to spotlight sanitation issues in these alleys and the historical and cultural significance of our area.
So, we found that these alleys had a really great opportunity for kind of some historic preservation, and we looked at a few different opportunities for doing this, including historic information kiosks, the inclusion of murals, and preserving the Old Town aesthetic through the physical design of the space. Through the process of this project throughout the quarter, we were really privileged to work with the Good Time Girls, who run the Bureau of Historic Investigation. They had a lot of really good ideas and insight for how we could kind of preserve the historic qualities of the space. One of the concerns that they brought up to us was that a lot of current historic preservation doesn't necessarily, is not necessarily inclusive of all of Bellingham's history. For example, we have an image up here of the really beautiful mural that's on the Bay Street Plaza that I'm sure many of us are familiar with, but it doesn't necessarily represent minorities in the community, such as ethnic minorities, women, or indigenous peoples. And we saw our alleys as a really good way to kind of bring those historic groups to the forefront in a unique way. The Good Time Girls presented to us a project idea that we thought was something that could be really interestingly implemented in these alleyways, and that is to highlight individuals or individual depictions of social groups throughout history in these alleys by painting in like individual-scale murals of just like one individual, along with some sort of information about that individual or how that individual or that group kind of contributed to society and how that's still working with us today. And a couple examples of this could include Jimmy Pickett, who's the half-lummy son of George Pickett, who is one of our town's founders, or the inclusion of Ella Higginson, who was a woman who moved here with her husband in the late 1880s and is a local poet and author, and she helped to found the first Bellingham Public Library and Western Washington University. And so, just to kind of highlight these groups that aren't necessarily always brought to the prevalence and inexpensive, kind of unobtrusive, but still really interesting way that everybody can access.
In addition, at the behest of our businesses, after speaking to local business owners in the area and property owners, waste and food waste in particular were of major issue. There's several restaurants, and there's many businesses that use these alleys as their sanitation zones. So, we looked at a few aesthetic and economic issues that relate to these and what we can possibly do to mitigate them looking forward. Coloring bins, simple and really easy, just kind of gives a little bit of bringing out to an issue that's already down there, but lends a little bit of aesthetic appeal to something that's generally regarded as disgusting to many people walking down the alleys. We also looked at the option for consolidated waste cages, like you've seen in the top picture there, which does exist throughout downtown already, where space provides, but these can be of varying sizes and are super great for allowing rapid pickup of sanitation, and it also saves several, you know, a lot of alley space for other uses further on down and creates some better corridors. We also looked at the idea of increasing the frequency of pickup of waste. This would result in smaller and fewer bins and would allow for more of that space to be saved for other uses and pedestrian access. This could be implemented through a trial period with businesses to see how it works and kind of given an option, and if it doesn't work, you know, we can look at others. There's also new technologies emerging for underground waste. I know downtown is looking at undergrounding several utilities already, such as electricity and potentially water systems. So, further on down the line, when it's economically feasible, this could be another option for keeping waste out of the alleys and sort of hiding it and containing it where it belongs. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Kevin Slager, and this is Elliot Fitzgerald, and our team focused on the alleys number four, five, and six located between Commercial Street and Cornwall Avenue. At the moment, much of the space is underappreciated and underutilized. Although these spaces are currently not being used, we see there's a lot of potential and many opportunities exist. After analyzing these spaces, we have addressed these opportunities by forming 22 strategies that will improve the alleyways by increasing pedestrian activity, commercial prospects, and overall aesthetics of the alleyways. These strategies include encouraging the designation of Alley Bar District near the Holly Street entrance, pursuing green road certification at sections of the alleyways that need repaving, and improving the atmosphere of the alley by implementing artistic murals, green walls, and better lighting. For the sake of time, we'll focus on strategies 1.5, 2.2, which look to include our alley's biggest asset, the parcade. Also, we'd like to highlight strategies 2.3, which suggests a new park at the intersections of Cornwall Avenue and Champion Street. Elliot will now examine the potential opportunities that would involve the downtown parcade.
Thank you, Kevin. Strategy 1.5 looks to fully utilize the ground level mezzanine that's within the parcade. This is the only space in the parcade with alley access. It's a space that could remain as parking on weekdays, and it could become a publicly leased area for vendors on weekends and evenings. Food vendors could sell food to residents, employees, parcade patrons, and it could complement the adjacent nightlife with the Tubbs Whiskey Bar and the Wine Bar there. Together, this will generate revenue for the city and will create a vital economic engine from underutilized parking areas. It's already covered, it's well lit, and it ties in nicely with some of our other strategies, which include designating a public viewing point on the top floor of that and exposing the exterior stairwell there right adjacent to the mezzanine in order to make the parcade more permeable to the pedestrian friendly alleyway there. Furthermore, strategy 2.2 examines placemaking opportunities on the Commercial Street Plaza. It's essentially an extension of our alleyway, and we can enhance the pedestrian activity here by pretty much putting more places to sit, whether public or private. Wavefinding street art could be coupled with green walls on the parcade to reduce stormwater flows and also reduce noise pollution and traffic noise associated with parking garages. This will simultaneously improve aesthetics for the area. All these strategies are ways in which we can establish the parcade as a noticeable destination. Regardless of the time of day, people could come here, and it can enable pedestrians to use it, to use the alley space as a public space.
So our last strategy involves the current parking lot on the corner of Cornwall Avenue and Champion Street. We feel that this is a great spot for a park, and we've dubbed this project Orca's Park because of the present Orca's mural that's there. This pocket park would increase open space in the downtown, provide an aesthetic to the entrance of downtown, because this is located right on Cornwall as you turn in, and it's kind of the first time you're presented with downtown. It's also would encourage pedestrian activity in the alley and the surrounding areas, and since it's an Orca's mural, we'd like to put a park there to pay homage to Bellingham's natural beauty and maritime history. And if you see the picture in the left, or the bottom left corner, that's a park with similar geometry and size, and as you can see, they have dense vegetation and have a lot of open space, which really helps the sense of place in this area. And we feel this, a park in this exact location would kind of do the same thing and be just an awesome portal from the residential area into the downtown. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Josh, and my group and I did alleys 7, 8, and 9. These are located between Railroad Avenue and Cornwall Avenue with cross streets of Chestnut and Holly. In all, we have come up with 17 different strategies for this area, but tonight I'll be focusing on two of those. First strategy is to propose a Leopold Park. This current situation is a parking lot on top of the Shrimp Shack Restaurant. This is located on Cornwall Avenue and Chestnut. Its current spot is an ideal location for a park due to its location next to the Leopold Retirement Residence. This park would provide leisurely opportunities for the retirees. This park could also be used as a playground, a potential dog park, place for outdoor recreation and exercise, and also an area for coffee and food vendors. This location is close to the mid-block crossing on Cornwall Avenue. By connecting the street level with the upper part of the park, we can create better stairway access by the picture there at the top. Continuing through the park to the alley level, which is at the same elevation as the park, creates good connection for pedestrians to flow through the park. Next proposal is the Horseshoe Arcade. This is located in the old JCPenney Building downtown. The JCPenney's moved to its current location in the Bellis Fair Mall 25 years ago. This has left a 63,000 square foot empty building for the last 25 years. So to mitigate this, we propose bringing the mall idea back downtown by creating an arcade-style shop through the heart of the building. By creating an arcade pictured there in the bottom left, you can create more businesses and shops throughout the big space. We propose up to about 12 different shops in the area. By bringing people through, you can bring them to the alley, which is currently neglected, as you can see in the middle picture in the bottom there, with improvements to lighting and utilities and some interactive art pieces. This could really liven up this neglected space. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric. This is Regina. We took a look at alleyways 10, 11, and 12. They're all between Holly and Champion Street. We identified this as a really unique area in this project because right smack dab in the middle of our alleys is the bus station, so a lot of our concepts go off of that. We have a lot of great ideas, including art murals, like you can maybe see at that picture at the top, a lot of new green spaces, some new parks, but the two things that we're going to talk about are lighting and environmental improvements. So as far as lighting goes, our group took a walk down these alleyways at night, and it wasn't exactly pretty. It wasn't really a place we wanted to be. About half the lights that were existing down there were burnt out or not working. So we really wanted to change this with the ground level just by replacing all these lights with LED lights that are more efficient, better lighting. And then we've also located some new ideas for all three of the alleyways with new types of lights. So up in alleyway 10 in the upper right, we think this is an ideal place for string lighting to go above the tops of the buildings. This would really illuminate the area, because throughout this alleyway, there's some decently lit places, but they're immediately contrasted with really dark grimy places with a lot of nooks and crannies. So the overhead lighting would be great here, and one thing we would complement this with is illuminated entrance archways, which you can see in the upper right picture. It just says Bar &amp; Grill over it. It had some lights on it. It's a really welcoming feature that can really draw people in, and like I said, we want to focus on getting more foot traffic through here. Another thing we have in this alley are neon bar signs that would kind of build on the feel of the bars and restaurants that are already there and some of the other parts of our project, which includes seating out there. Down in the bus alleyway in alleyway 11, it's kind of an open space, so lighting wasn't really too big of an issue here, and we want to put more string lights to the existing bus street lamps that are there to the buildings. And finally, in our last alleyway, with, throughout the rest of the project, I guess, we kind of felt a historic feel emerging from this area, so we would like to implement historic street lamps and building lights throughout this alley. There's some really cool companies that sell these lights. They give you the cast iron look, but with better materials, and we really feel like this would kind of placemake this area, and it'd be a fun place you want to go back to and walk down. So here's Regina with the environmental improvements.
So for environmental improvements, we wanted to mainly focus on air quality. So for air quality improvements, we could achieve this by implementing anti-air pollution sculptures, and this is the image on the top left, the left side. These are sculptures that have a fine paint of titanium dioxide, which reacts with ambient daylight to reduce volatile organic compounds and nitrogen oxides, which are both a major source, come from a major source of cars. So our thoughts were that the best location to place these would be along alleyway 11, along the facade, which is adjacent to the bus station, downtown bus station. One of our second ideas for improving air quality would be to implement vertical gardens, which would help reduce carbon dioxide as well as filter rainwater, and they won't be able to compromise the valuable horizontal space of the downtown area. They can also be created to be sustainable when connected to rainwater catchment systems.
I'm Jesse Ashbaugh, and this is Johnny Renker. We're looking at alleys 13, 14, and 15. These three alleys are in the southwest corner of the downtown district between Railroad and State Street, Laurel, and Holly. We generated 23 strategies for enhancing these alleys that cover everything from addressing concerns about garbage and lighting to the introduction of pocket parts, pocket parks and public art installations. Tonight, however, we are going to highlight to the council just two of these strategies. The first is located in the bottom left alley, also known as Morse Alley, and addresses the generation of social capital by developing spaces and places for pedestrian interaction. By utilizing current structural opportunities and strategic and focused development, there's a real opportunity for enriched pedestrian experiences and economic prospects. The second strategy is focused in the alley there in the middle behind the farmer's market. It provides a solution to the limited connection between the thriving farmer's market and the alley adjacent to it. Capitalizing on the intense activity generated by the market can offer a catalyst for activating the alleyway and bringing critical support to alley businesses.
Plazets could act as a great social and human capital amenity by accommodating social spilling from popular restaurants as well as encouraging public use. This alley actually already offers really valuable assets that would be really good to build from, which make it a really good site to pursue this type of development. The plaza should be aesthetically and functionally different from the rest of the alleyway through the use of differentiated pavers and also other pedestrian amenities. These would provide visual cues to drivers to use caution and drive slowly and just kind of let them know that it is a pedestrian dominated zone. They are meant to discourage through traffic, although there is an increasing number of residents that use the alley to access parking, so eliminating through traffic altogether would be impossible, but this kind of reinforces the importance of really showcasing it as a pedestrian zone. The top left picture here shows how this could kind of look behind the Green Frog to give you a sense of what it would look like in this particular site. But plazets would be great for alley-fronted businesses by attracting large volumes of people and just creating a unique charm and character to the alley and making it overall enjoyable place to be. A second strategy for the alley behind the market would be extending the stairway that is currently retaining walls, as you can see here in the picture to the right. This would accommodate through foot traffic that's produced by the Saturday Market. There's limited seating during market hours, and people use that small staircase that you see in that same picture to sit, and extending the stairway would provide a lot more space for seating, like hundreds more places to sit. Sit and socialize, and it would also be making use of a area that's, a space that's underutilized at the time being. It would also include the alley in the market experience and kind of connect the two entities to really provide one large space that people can use and enjoy. The increased foot traffic would again be really good for businesses in the alley, including what we identified as a great prime spot for infill, as you can see here on the model on either side of the parking lot there, as well as existing communities, or existing businesses. But this kind of sums up our big ideas. We hope you found some of it useful, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very, very much. That was totally awesome. Many good ideas. Any comments or questions from council members?
Well, this is two years in a row that Nick has brought some great students here. It's absolutely fantastic what's going on up there, and it's not surprising with who you have as a professor, but you know, looking over this stuff, and I'm not joking, if we were to go out and hire a consultant for this kind of stuff, $25,000, $50,000, easy. So it's amazing, right here in our community, our students up at Western are learning this kind of stuff. It's really great to see, and thank you, Nick, for bringing them back again.
Terry?
Yeah. In the late 90s, we had these held downtown development workshops, and at that time, it was pointed out how underused the alleys are and talked about some possibilities. This fleshes it out. We haven't gone anywhere from it from then, other than just that talk of, yeah, that's an underused resource. It's wonderful to see what some of the possibilities are, and it'd be really nice to see something move to happen with some of those as opposed to just, yes, we have this underutilized resource here.
Roxanne?
It's a great presentation, great ideas. Thank you again, Nick.
I concur, so many excellent ideas, and I just want to echo one thing. One of my favorite things about cities like New York and San Francisco is to be able to get a table in the alley for dinner, and so I just think that creates such positive associations with the city, and I'd love to see things like that.
I just want to say thanks for giving us a visual. It's very important to have something to shoot for and to be able to imagine where we want to go without pictures of what's possible. It's a lot harder to do, so thank you very, very much. Okay. Okay, we've got one-third presentation this evening until we move into our regular committee reports, and that is our Community Development Advisory Board presentation. This is going to be by Rhiannon Bardslay, the CDAB, I don't know her title, but she's a CDAB board member, and on proposed priorities for housing and human and social service Information only, and come on down. Catherine, you'll be doing this too? Welcome.
Wow, I can't believe we have to follow those exciting presentations, but I'm Catherine Chambers, and good evening, Mayor Linville and council members. I'm going to talk for just a brief moment about the history of the Community Development Advisory Board, and I'll give you this copy since we didn't get any copies for anybody. So the Community Development Advisory Board was established by ordinance by the council first in 1978 under Mayor Ken Hertz, and there were, have been three other ordinances: 1984, 1992, and 2007, all when Mayor was Tim Douglas, and I believe Gene Knutson came on in 94, and Terry Bornham in 2000. So it establishes the purpose of the Community Development Advisory Board, which advises the city council, mayor, planning commission, and various city departments as appropriate concerning the formulation of policies, plans, identification of projects in order to carry out the CDAB block grant program and the home investment partner program, and now the Housing Levy Fund. Typical decisions: the board reviews community service needs, establishes criteria for funding, evaluates applications, and arrives at recommendations for the distribution of the city's annual allocation of CDAB, or excuse me, CDGB and general funds for human services. The board also recommends a targeting and allocation of CDGB funding for neighborhood improvements through the planning process for the five-year and the annual consolidated plan of housing and community development. The board recommends the allocation of CDGB and home funds to the city's Housing Development Fund for the retention and rehabilitation and development of affordable housing. Funds are also allocated for rehab of low and moderate income, single-family owner-occupied homes, and for investor, and, excuse me, investor, I lost my place, owned and family rental housing units occupied by low to moderate income individuals and families. And included now is the recommendation, again, for the Housing Levy Funds. So the membership includes 15 members appointed by the mayor who shall serve without compensation, and no member of the board may be an employee of the city. It includes one or more professional businessperson with expertise in financing, construction, or marketing of housing, and one or more members shall have background and expertise in advocacy for low and moderate income housing, concerns, tenant issues, and social security or housing. Low-income diverse populations such as elderly and other social welfare interests shall be represented as available. One member shall be appointed from each of the six wards of the city, and one member should be, shall be a member of the Bellingham-Wakem County Housing Authority Board or the staff. The board elects a chairperson- The board elects a chairperson and a vice-chairperson by majority vote. A majority of appointed members shall constitute a quorum. Regular meetings shall be held at least nine times a year. An advisory board shall establish bylaws to govern and conduct its business. So now, I'm going to turn it over to Rhiannon, who will give you a little glimpse of what we have done in terms of our funding priorities for this year.
Hi, good evening. It's past my bedtime, so I will make this quick. So I'm Rhiannon Bardslay, and I am actually just recently the vice-chair, I think, of CDAB now. And I've been on the board for about a year and a half or so. So like Catherine said, CDAB reviews all of the funding program applications that come into the city, and we make recommendations to you and to the mayor. The programs, I'm going to list them off quickly, are the preservation program, the rental housing production, the manufactured home repair, public facilities and improvements, which is new for us this year, tenant-based rental assistance, or TIBRA, I don't know if you guys know that, winter emergency shelter, human and social services, and then housing services. So those are all the programs that we go through, so the city gets to apply for those NOFAs, and then we go through and review all of the applications and determine or make recommendations on which ones we believe would receive a mix of either local city funds or federal funds. And really, all the magic happens in the city with David Stahlheim in terms of how we figure out what is eligible and all of that fun stuff, but basically, we review the applications. So like I said, these programs are funded through a mix of local and federal funds. But tonight specifically, I'm going to talk about two of those programs, and that's the Human and Social Services NOFA and the Housing Services NOFA. So last year, and historically, these two actually have been one NOFA, and what we did this year was reevaluated how that NOFA came out and how people were going to apply for, and what we wanted to see funded out of those city dollars. So the need was identified, that we wanted to ensure that the city-funded programs were meeting the identified needs of our community. So an ad hoc committee was formed, called the Priorities Committee, fancy name, and we reviewed the 2012 and the 2013 applications and the past NOFAs to get a good idea of what was happening, who was being funded, who was applying, and not only, sorry, not necessarily who, but what programs? What was the city funding, and what were we not funding? And were those relevant to the, I mean, were we matching the needs with the funds that we were investing? So we actually recommended, the Priorities Committee recommended that we split these into two. So instead of having one NOFA that kind of was general human services, we split it into two. So we have specifically a housing NOFA, and then we have the human and social services. And the idea was that these are two very distinct programs and services, and we didn't necessarily want them intermingling, coexisting. So we just wanted to be able to be really specific about what we were funding in those programs. And additionally, we wanted to, the committee recommended that we use the City Legacy and Strategic Commitments, the 2013 through 2017 Consolidated Plan, and the Ten Year Plan to End Homelessness to help drive our decision-making. And so those recommendations were presented to the CDAB, and they approved them, because they're smart. No, just joking. So, and part of it was that there's, it was really clear going through it that everybody was really passionate and wanted, everybody on that board is amazing, and they all want to fully fund everything. And so it got to be really clear that we needed to be specific and strategic in what we were going to fund. And so the Priorities Committee then went through, with the guidance of those plans mentioned, determined the specific populations and specific activities that we would be prioritizing for that funding. And so what the committee recommended was that the populations include, that we were going to prioritize, include elderly individuals, youth, victims of domestic violence, people re-entering from institutions, that would be jail or mental health institutions, those with physical or mental impairments. And so that's across the board in both the human services and housing. And then for the housing, we also included chronically homeless as a population we wanted to prioritize. The activities are vocational services, service integration and the coordination of systems, the use of volunteers, and funding diversity. So those are the activities that we're prioritizing. And if you look at our NOFAs that were released, there's points that are associated with each one of those. So the committee took this recommendation to CDAB, and they approved these as well after a four-hour meeting, where we did a lot of what was happening earlier. And so they approved that and additionally decided to actually do funding ranges, which we haven't done in the past. So for the human and social services one, it's five thousand to forty thousand is the range for that one. And for the housing, it's ten thousand to fifty thousand. So that wasn't something that we had historically, and there was a lot of discussion about the pros and cons of setting funding ranges. So the applications were due today at five, and we have five hundred and fifty-seven thousand in federal and local funds available to grant out between these two programs. And I got some numbers from David today, and we have eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand in requests. So you'll see that a lot of programs will go unfunded, which I'm grateful for the ability to have a process that we get to go through, to be very strategic, and it's going to be very clear that these are programs that the city may be funding, the city should be funding. So we're going to get into that. I think next month, we're going to be doing all the fun scoring of these things and having the discussions. We already have eight hours set aside to discuss these and figure out how we want to prioritize and make recommendations to you folks. And I will wrap up with just saying that I am really looking forward to working with the council and the mayor on making sure that the 2015 budget doesn't have this large of a disparity. Any questions?
Thank you, Rhiannon. Yeah, Michael?
I just want to say thank you. We have over twenty different citizen advisory boards and commissions, and some are harder working than others. And my impression for years has been that CDAB has been one of the hardest working, and with adding the home levy fund on there, I know this last year, you were even harder working. As you mentioned before, we actually have a law, we can't compensate or pay you for your work, so I just want to offer you my personal thanks for you and the entire CDAB, because you really are doing far more work than even our other volunteer board members do. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
Anyone else? Anything for Rhiannon?
Thank you, good night.
You very much. Okay, that concludes our presentations for the evening, and we're going to move into Starting with Public Works, Public Safety, with Teri Bornham, the Chair.
Thank you, Kathy. We had three items before the committee today. The first was ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code 15.08 to create a new service classification and rate for bulk water filling stations. Public Works Department has recently completed installation of two bulk water filling stations. The stations will allow for multiple users to assess, access water using a PIN code system and allow the city to track and monitor usage. The proposed ordinance amends Bellingham Municipal Code 15.08 to create a new service classification and volumetric rate for bulk water filling stations. Bulk water is typically used for non-potable maintenance and construction activities. Due to the intermittent nature of bulk water use, customers in the bulk water rate class will be charged based on volume only. Customers will be billed monthly if water is used. No base charge will apply. The volumetric rate will be the same as the irrigation-only customer class. The irrigation class is a higher rate than a regular water rate. The fiscal impact of the ordinance is expected to result in increased revenue in the water For 10, the committee recommended approval and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero with Gene Knutson out of the room.
The next item was for information only, and it was a little update on the Watcombe Falls Water Filtration Plant Pretreatment. The city has been working towards the addition of a pretreatment system to the Watcombe Falls Water Treatment Plant. The pretreatment system will remove organic materials from the raw water, thereby increasing efficiency and reducing potential harmful disinfection byproducts. With the approval of the water system plan and approval of the 2014 budget, staff are proceeding with Phase One of the engineering design work for the project. Phase One includes a siting, alignment, analysis, condition assessment of pipeline infrastructure, preliminary design and permitting. Following a formal selection process, CH2M Hill was selected as the most qualified firm for this work. Estimated $778,000 contract will be executed in March 2014. The fiscal impact of this is staff are finalizing the scope and schedule with the consultant based on the current draft scope of the work. The contract for this first phase of engineering work is estimated to cost $778,000. Funding for the work is included in the 2014 budget through the water fund and was planned as part of the recent water rate study. Again, this was just for information only, giving us an update of where they're at with that project. The last item was, we brought forward the inter-local agreement between the City of Bellingham and the Watcombe Council of Governments to help fund the Watcombe Smart Trips Program. Since 2006, the city has entered into an annual agreement with the Watcombe Council of Government, their COG, to help fund the Watcombe Smart Trips Program. The fiscal impact of this was, is $25,000 in 2014, paid to the Watcombe Council of Governments toward the planning and implementation of the Watcombe Smart Trips Program. The committee recommended on a vote of two to one to recommend authorizing the contract and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes six-one with Councilmember Weiss in opposition.
Okay, one.
I didn't say, he did.
Okay, end of committee? Moving on to Mr. Weiss with planning.
I resemble that.
You do.
All right, this afternoon, for the planning committee, this afternoon, we had one item. It was a consideration of a lease agreement of 707 Astro Street with the Homeport Learning Center. The Homeport Learning Center is a nonprofit community organization that operates transitional education program involving education, vocational training, and mentoring to adjudicated and at-risk youth. In 2003, Homeport began leasing the city-owned property at 707 Astro Street at market rate, but in 2007 requested a rent reduction in order to maintain its program in light of county funding cuts. The council approved the reduced rent through resolution, and since 2008, the city has continued the lease at reduced rent through modifications of the original contract. A new five-year lease has been proposed, continuing the reduced rent. The committee reviewed that lease this afternoon, and we recommended approval and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just would like to say how much I appreciate seeing this kind of a program. I've had a chance to see it up close from the beginning and see this program develop and see what they've done with some, working with at-risk kids who have a hard time making it in the regular school districts for a lot of different reasons. A lot of times, it's because they have a different learning style. More hands-on learners in regular school are for people who can sit quiet, keep their mouth shut, and do the work. And if you can't do that, a lot of times, it doesn't work out real well. Homeport works with difficult students, and they're getting them through school. They're giving them the skills to go on in a lot of different areas, and if it wasn't for our help with reduced rent and other kinds of things, this program wouldn't exist. It exists on a lot of community support, benefits a lot of at-risk kids, and a really valuable program. Programs like this help cut back on the costs later on in a lot of different programs. So I really appreciate the work that they do.
Thanks, Terri. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
End of committee.
Thank you, Jack. Moving on, we have Finance and Personnel with Michael Illaquist.
Thank you, Kathy. The Finance Committee had only one item before us today. Four times a year, by our own guidelines, the finance director, city's finance director, comes before the council and gives us a quarterly report. This time was the year-end report for the end of 2013. As usual, I will recommend that people actually go back and watch the video this afternoon where all the details are given. I'm just going to briefly go through some of what was told to us. Our finance director, Brian Henshaw, told us or showed us that the treasury yields and other interest rates are going up. This is good for the city in the sense that we have our own investments and reserve accounts, we get more interest off of them, but bad in the sense that the city borrows money from time to time, and it therefore increases our borrowing costs. Looking at the countywide farm rates, this is the third year in a row we've seen small but steady increases in the number of people employed in Bellingham. I don't think we're quite up to the years before the recession, but each year, we're getting better, and that's a hopeful sign. Another hopeful sign is building activity, although slightly down from last year, certainly up from the trough, and in particular, the number of single-family home permits is up, which is considered a leading indicator for future economic activity. We then went through our city finances, several key accounts, as well as the general fund, and there were significant differences this year from last year, but in most cases, they are attributable to single, large projects that create great swings in our funding. For example, the sewer treatment plant is a $50 million project. We borrowed a huge amount of money a couple of years ago. Revenue's way up. We're spending it madly over these next two years to finish that project, very soon, actually, and so our expenses are way up this year. So there's large swings and deviations, but in each case, they're not really due to great changes in the way the city's operating, but rather due to large projects that are moving through the city's books. In terms of the general fund, the general fund, looking back about eight years ago, is significantly up from that time, although the number of city employees hasn't gone up. Our health benefit costs have gone up, and other costs have gone up slightly, but salaries and benefits continues to be the majority. Seventy-one percent of the general fund expenditures, general fund, fire, police, our legal staff, planning developments, libraries, things like that, everything but utilities, largely speaking. Again, going back to how I began this presentation on the interest rates, we used to earn several million dollars a year in interest off of our substantial reserve holdings. That dropped to almost nothing. The reserve, the interest rate on our state investment pool is like, it's a fraction of a percent right now. Luckily, over the last few years, our finance department has found a good but safe place to invest the city's money, and we are celebrating by earning one percent, which is far more than a comparable investment pools are making, which does bring in not quite a million dollars a year, not what it used to bring in. So that is the summary of the finance report. That was our only item for the Finance Committee, and that was for information only. End of report.
Great, thank you very much. And last but not least, Lake Watcombe and Natural Resources with Pinky Margus, Chair.
Thank you, Kathy. We had two items today. We had a discussion of the draft joint resolution of the City of Bellingham City Council, Watcombe County Council, and the Lake Watcombe Water and Sewer District, setting Lake Watcombe milestones and inviting Sutton Valley to join the policy group. At the February 3, 2014, meeting of the Lake Watcombe Policy Group... At the February 3rd, 2014 meeting of the Lake Watcom Policy Group, consisting of all those representatives, the group discussed the idea of a joint resolution to set planning milestones for achieving phosphorus reduction in the Lake Watcom watershed. This agenda item was introduced for discussion before the city on February 10th, 2014, and the session will allow further discussion of the resolution and possible direction regarding future actions. The committee, consisting of Terry Borneman and Roxanne Murphy and myself, all recommended three to oh to pass both joint resolutions, that's one for the milestones and also for adding Sutton Valley, to be passed, the, sorry, the joint resolution to be passed on the March 26th Annual Lake Watcom Joint Council and Committee Meeting on, at 6:30 in the City of Bellingham Council Chambers here.
Oh yeah, so we'll bring that up that evening for being passed, yeah.
And the second item was a review of the March 3rd Lake Watcom Policy Group meeting. The Lake Watcom Policy Group, consisting of the representatives of the Lake Watcom Water and Sewer District, the county, and the city council, we meet monthly to discuss policy issues regarding Lake Watcom. The Lake Watcom and Natural Resources Committee, I'm just going to give you a little review because we had many, many presentations that day, we can't go over them all today. I encourage you to look on the website or review this afternoon's discussion. We had a presentation on our Lake Watcom Buildout Report on land acquisition, preservation, and restoration. We had a briefing on planning for parks and former DNR lands. Also, on the role of Lake Watcom Land Trust in preserving and restoring land, I will say one item on there. I just encourage you all, if you want to be land stewards, we can always have more volunteers in that area. And we also had an update on forestry activities in the watershed. And just as an additional item, just to let you know that Lake Watcom Water Solutions Workshop will be held this Saturday in Bloedel Donovan Park from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM and that is on our HIPPP program, encourage you to attend. And again, on March 26th, we will be having our annual Lake Watcom Joint Council and Commissions Meeting here at 6:30 PM. And end of committee.
Thank you very much, Madam Vargas. Okay, and finally, we move on to committee of the whole. I'll just recap real quickly. We had, I think, two items of substance. The first was a presentation by the mayor and Vanessa Blackburn in the mayor's office on Community Solutions Work Group and some solutions that have come up from that effort around downtown health and safety. Fourteen items were recognized and we dove into those in quite some depth. It was a great presentation and I encourage folks to go back and watch that if they have interest in those items. I did have one question, Mayor. Part of the scope of this, it was identifying challenges, solutions, and producing an action plan, and we talked a little bit about action will come, but I can't remember exactly what you said about that and that's an important piece, so I was wondering if maybe you could touch on that again real quickly.
Well, I think the priorities indicate where the action plan will be, but we didn't get into the details of everything, as I said this afternoon, until the council said, those all sound good, or those don't sound good, because they're, almost all of them are fairly detailed.
Yeah.
So we will come back either through the committee process or through the committee of the whole when we have more specific recommendations to make, but this is an ongoing weekly work group, not with the citizens, but now with the staff.
Okay.
So there were, action is happening right now, we want to bring you back specifics. We got some good feedback from the council this afternoon about looking citywide and we had considered that and we will definitely consider that when we bring proposals forward.
Great. Anyone else want to add anything on these fourteen excellent recommendations? Thank you for all that hard work and for moving through it quite quickly. That was really an expedited process, obviously. Okay, next we had, we held a closed record hearing. In consideration of an ordinance for Colson Community Land Trust to use the demonstration program for innovative, permanently affordable homeownership program code to build three affordable homes. And we voted to accept the hearing examiner's recommendation this afternoon and we recommended approval of the ordinance with the first and second reading. Am I saying that properly? It's a little bit complicated. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. So I just want to double check, we did that properly? We got the, okay, approved the hearing examiner this afternoon and did this right. Okay, yes. Getting better all the time. Okay, we did not have any minutes for this evening. Old and new business, I'll just report out that this afternoon, the council authorized me to send a letter on our behalf to our state legislators urging them to add an amendment to legislation they're debating that provides a portion of marijuana tax revenue back to cities. We focused on the fact that cities need funding to address local impacts resulting from recreational marijuana sales, that we can't wait for this solution. It's an, it's important that cities get a portion of the revenue and establish a partnership between the state and local governments this year and that cities, Bellingham included, are already experiencing impacts from legalized marijuana and we would really appreciate some revenue to help deal with them. So we did get that letter drafted this afternoon and sent off right after our meeting, so thank you. Any other old or new business?
Just real quick, shout out to Chris Coleman and his crew for putting on a great open house last Wednesday night on the Alabama Street Concerns. A lot of people were prejudging what was going to come out of that and they really left pretty happy and to know that, and Chris and his group do a great job, so I just want to thank them for calming down the neighborhood.
Great, anything else? Okay, next is a report from executive session. This afternoon, we had six items in executive session that probably took an hour and I'll report on each of these individually. The first was evaluation of the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. The council discussed and evaluated the qualifications of an applicant for permanent employment, direction was given, no action taken. Number two was potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter, information only, no action taken. Number three, staff provided information on a potential litigation matter, it was information only and no action taken. Same thing for number four. Number five, also exactly the same. And number six was potential litigation, staff-
Excuse me?
Do I need to read?
President Lehman?
We have to read those.
Just number five had, there was direction given in number five.
Oh, okay. You're right, thank you. So number five, staff provided information on a potential litigation matter, direction was given, no action taken. Okay, thank you, Peter. Okay? Number six, potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter involving the following properties, 2315 Lynn Street and 2512 Lynn Street. Action was taken and I will entertain a motion to authorize the legal department to file civil nuisance actions with respect to these properties.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. End of executive session report and we'll move into the mayor's report.
The mayor went on vacation, she's home. Very happy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Looks very nice and tan.
And she's tan.
And she's tan, well, that's a good sign. I have three appointments and then I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the city center implementation plan. The three appointments do not need your approval. Mayor's appointment of Nicholas Kunkel to the, oh, it just, I'm reading this. What do I need your approval for? Just one second.
They all need approval.
Oh, well, we have a little difficulty on the agenda, so you do get to approve things. Are you happy?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Nicholas Kunkel to the Lake Watcom Watershed Advisory Board.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
The second is David Marshak to the Greenways Advisory Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Way to jump in there, Roxanne.
We're approving all of these, okay, great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And then finally, the recommendation of the library board was to appoint Tom Barrett to the Public Library Board as a trustee.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Kathy?
Jack?
So just a word about Tom Barrett. He's like one of those very few public servants that we have in our community that have been working on advisory committees and boards and commissions for many, many years and I, I applaud, applaud you for appointing him to the library board. I know that he'll, he'll provide a, a lot of wisdom to, to the board and, and work with them in, in a good way.
Well, he was a great planning commission president, board president, and I'll, I'll have to tell you that your approval of him is great because he was thrilled and he is that kind of a person. He was, he's a very humble person, works hard and brings a real integrity to the boards that he serves on, so thank you for your approval of that.
Had some steep competition, too.
He had some really steep competition, that's why I kept myself out of it and went on a board recommendation because that happens.
And went to Hawaii. And went to Hawaii.
Yeah, that got, got away. Okay. The My Downtown and the City Center Implementation will be published this week and Tara will link you to it, I think, when it's posted on Thursday, so you'll have all the information. It's separate from the comprehensive plan and it comes from a lot of citizen input during the, the, the time that we were taking the input about what people want to see downtown, what they like, and where they see our problems. We decided, as I said this afternoon, to call it City Center because of the fact that Old Town Downtown and the waterfront, the downtown waterfront are the center of our city and truly, if you look geographically and you count the downtown waterfront part, it's Old Town that ends up being the geographical center. But as always, we want to make sure that our downtown gets the attention it needs and this ensures that it will. The strategy is reflected in the Bellingham, the downtown Bellingham Plan, the waterfront district plan, and the Old Town Subarea Plan, and that was adopted in 2008. And as you know, there's been a real lag in development in that area. They have three different needs, but we have, I'll use the Maritime Heritage Park as an example. We do have that plan that Michael suggested we present to Gene's committee, which we will do, but it's pretty comprehensive and it looks at revitalizing that downtown city park. Hmm?
No, it's gone the, no, it's going on to the downtown.
Oh, is it? I thought it was going to the parks.
Community Economic Development.
Community Economic Development.
Whichever one, we'll send it to you.
It doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter. Well, there was, it was a variety of different areas, so that's why, probably that. And, and when you look at the plan, some of the things that I'm asking you to consider are improving the permit process, losing, using a lean strategy. The, the planning, everyone's shaking their heads. The planning department just used the free services of the state auditor in the week before, I think I went on vacation, and actually like cut 31 days out of one process just by putting a folder on the counter. So those are the kind of things that don't change the, the protection that we're using, that don't change the public process, that don't change a lot of things, but they take out the steps, the redundant steps that you have in shuffling the paper from one person to another. So we're real excited about that. They have three more kind of workshops to go through and, and we've got another volunteer in human resources to look at the application process for employees because that's another thing that's been fairly slow because of all the steps you have to go through. So is there a way we can protect the steps but do it more quickly because those vacancies stay where they are? The second thing is a large vacant retail space. As I think the, the students from Western said, you know, there's been buildings downtown that have been vacant for 25 years. And as I mentioned, we are meeting with property owners, we are asking for cooperation with them on looking at their buildings and doing something different. It's pretty hard because we can't make contact with everybody and we don't know the right person necessarily to talk to, but we're proceeding with that, also working with legal to see what our options are. Because those big, open storefronts, you know, it's pretty hard to enliven Cornwall Avenue when you have such a large vacant storefront and no plan in sight. And then it was the dedication, Terry suggested there might be another way to do this, but the, the preventative community policing downtown, however we decide to do that, that's also on the list. This draft will be available, the draft for the city center implementation will be available as we're going through the downtown plan, planning process, the type six process that we're going through, so we can integrate this with the zoning and the other changes that are being proposed. As with the Community Solutions Work Group, these things will be, for action, will be brought to you individually when they're all fleshed out, but this will give you a chance by Thursday when you get the, the overall strategy to look at it and to give me feedback and Tara feedback on what you think about it. Okay, so that's, that's about all unless, I'll answer questions because I gave you kind of a high level. I wish Tara was here to answer specific things.
Well, Jeff is here.
Jeff is here?
He could answer something. I, I do have a question, that type six process? Any idea when we would begin that?
Well, it's begun.
Okay.
The, the downtown plan update and development regulation changes, the staff report for the planning commission is conducting a public hearing on March 27th.
Oh, great, okay.
The materials for that meeting will be published prior to the end of this week, including the staff report. The actual draft plan and code changes have been on the city's website since, I believe, the first week in February. So those are available to the public to look at now and we've actually had some people that have been poking around online and asking staff questions, making some suggested, recommended changes, so definitely it's out there for the public to look at. We've got some, we've got three work sessions, I believe, scheduled in April and early May for the planning commission to deliberate on the, the plan and the code changes and then that will be coming to city council, we hope, in June.
So maybe by June, we'll have the downtown plan in front of us.
That's correct.
That's so exciting.
Pretty exciting.
It is. I remember when that started, I was a staff person with an organization working to get it going, that was so exciting. It was a long time ago. Michael?
Yes, it is exciting. So I'm trying to, just so you may understand how this is going to work, there are three documents I see coming forward. There's the downtown plan, there's also separate regulatory documents, downtown regulations, and also the downtown or city center implementation plan. So I assume we're going to want to see them all together, not necessarily vote on them like in one night, for goodness sakes, let's not do the waterfront plan all over again. But it seems similar to the waterfront plan. We have a group of interrelated documents and I think we're going to have time to view them that way. That is the plan?
That's correct. So the draft, city center implementations- So the draft, City Center Implementation Strategy, Action Plan, I believe it's called Implementation Strategy on the cover, that will also be made available later this week for everyone's public consumption. That won't be part of the type-six legislative review, but it will be partnering with the downtown plan and with the code changes for, and certainly a third of that document is related to downtown, as the mayor mentioned. Old Town and waterfront action items as well will be included in the consolidated document. So we'll be asking Council to review that and also take action on that, to pass that. And then that will be a more fluid document, free from the arms of GMA, per se, where the mayor will be able to work with the Council on an annual basis to adjust that document as action items are completed, as new action items come up. It'll, it'll flow through time.
And that's passed by resolution, not, not like you'd adopt the zoning and that kind of thing. That, I think that's what you meant by more fluid. So you adopt the resolution that we want to do these things and then we bring specific actions to you for consideration as we go forward.
Okay. So, yeah, Roxanne? I'm excited to hear that aspect of it because I really don't want this to become a dust collector on a shelf somewhere. This has to be an energizing program as we go forward, so thank you. Anything else? Yeah. Yeah, Jeff?
Just one additional quick comment. One of the first items the mayor described regarding lean and, and our design review process, Kurt Nabafeld and I will be actually making a fuller presentation at the City Council on April 7th regarding lean management and the results of our kaizen event, it's called, regarding our type-two City Center Review Design Process.
Very cool.
Hey.
Thank you very much.
Want me to play the Hawaiian song on my nose for you? No, okay. I can do that. It sounds pretty, pretty realistic, okay.
So on that note, anything else in the mayor's report?
No, mayor's report is over.
Okay, thank you very much. Looks like we are at consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second.
You got a gander, she's getting me.
It was Gene and Roxanne. Roxanne. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 20319, an ordinance amending the 2014 budget appropriating an additional $223,000 in unanticipated revenue and $80,000 from estimated ending unreserved balance in the water fund to provide for the aquatic invasive species AIS boat inspection program in the Public Works Department.
Move third and final.
Second.
Jack Guise?
No.
Terri Borneman?
No.
Gene Knitson?
Aye.
Kathy Lehman?
I was playing one there.
Aye.
Michael Illaquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
No.
Ordinance passes four-three.
Kind of our teeth.
And I, there's just that one tonight.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned.